This day and this opportunity is a great thing, as each and every day is a great thing. We are here for a purpose and we certainly thank God and we thank God to you also with that. I am calling the meeting to order and so with that also being said, Pastor Seaver is not able to be here, but we have Pastor, Assistant Pastor Stephen Page, if he would come to lead us with the invocation, and then we'll call on Councilmember Green to lead us with the prayers that we should stand and remain standing.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor Campbell, let us pray. While we pause this bright sunshine day in the midst of summer, we will thank you for your blessings, and of course we acknowledge that sometimes he gets a little prescriptive, so give us wisdom and grace as we go about the business of serving mindfully, carefully, and safely. While we pray, praise upon all our employees and their diligently seeking to serve, we just thank you for this moment in time as we pause, acknowledge your love and your grace, we seek your wisdom and your mercy as we go about the business and the serving. Lord of each member of council, touch their lives, assure them of your presence in the day of business of life, bless them as they may be blessed in your name. Lord is in Jesus, then in the deed we do pray. Amen.
And salute the flag, and say it.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with good reason and justice for all.
Thank Pastor Seaver, thank you Councilmember Green.
Yes, sir.
So much, and we just want to thank our members, these people that moved to town, I just met them this morning when I walked in, thank you Pastor Wolf Mack, and this is Wolf Mack, come to the Phoenix City, positive in Phoenix City, so with you being here, you keeping us, keeping this positive, so thank you so much, so just wanted to put that point out there. Proceeding on, council at this time, we do not have any presentation or qualifications, so we'll go right to the city clerk, and at this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion for approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for June 30, 2025, motion approved. Have a motion, councilman Day, and a second.
Second.
Second, councilmember Green. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Second.
Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, I'd like to call for a motion from the council for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for July 1st, 2025, council. Do we have a motion, council?
Motion approved.
All right, motion, councilmember Green, second, councilman Day. All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, at this time, if there is any contentious business that any councilmember or members need to discuss, if not, we proceed on with the resolutions and on the administration. We have a resolution in reference to issuing a certificate of selection to Lakeitha Ligon for the office of school board member at large for such term pursuant to its provision of section 11-4625 as amended. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas sections 11-4620 through 11-4673 of Alabama Code of 1975 as amended provide for a regularly general and special elections in cities and towns of this state, except those cities and towns which have a commission form of government. And whereas section 11-4643 of the Alabama Code of 1975 prohibits right-hand candidates in elections held under sections 11-4620 through 11-4673 of the Alabama Code of 1975 as amended. And whereas section 11-4626 of the Alabama Code of 1975 as amended provides that if only one person has filed a statement of candidacy or has been nominated for an office for an election to be held pursuant to sections 11-4620 through 11-4673 of the Alabama Code of 1975 as amended at the time the deadline for qualifications has passed, then such person shall for all purposes be deemed elected to such office, and the mayor or the chief executive officer shall not cause the name of such person or the office for which his candidacy was declared to be printed on the ballot, but he shall immediately file a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested from the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy or was nominated for the office preceding the deadline set for an election of school board members of the municipality and sending forth the name of such person. And whereas section 11-4626 as amended provides that the government body of the municipality, after receiving such statement, shall adopt a resolution declaring the person named in the statement duly elected to the office described in the statement and shall issue a certificate of election to such person. And whereas the mayor of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has filed a written statement with the government body of the municipality attested from the clerk, certifying the fact that only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of school board member at large prior to the deadline, and that the name of the person who filed such statement was Lakeisha Ligon. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Lakeisha Ligon be, and she is hereby declared duly elected to the office of the school board member at large in the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday of November 2025. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, be and he hereby is directed to issue a certificate of election to Lakeisha Ligon for the office of school board member at large for such term pursuant to the provisions of section 11-4625 as amended. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis, council, we've heard of the resolutions, this time I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion, council, the board may have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the administration, there's a resolution in reference to compensating the city clerk for $60 per day, the city clerk's office employees and city manager office employees in an amount of $35 per day per person for the performance of his or her duties with respect to the absentee ballots on election day. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the date for the regular Phoenix City municipal election and the Phoenix City Board of Education election will be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. And whereas it is a desire of the Phoenix City Council to compensate the city clerk in the amount of $60 per day, and the city clerk employees and the city manager employees in the amount of $35 per day per person for the performance of his or her duties with respect to the absentee ballots on election day and during the 35-day period prior to date of the election for which his or her services are required to be paid from the Phoenix City Treasury. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city clerk should be compensated $60 per day, and the employees of the city clerk's office and city manager's office be compensated in the amount of $35 per day per person for the performance of his or her duties with respect to the absentee ballots on election day and during the 35-day period prior to the date of election, which his or her services are required to be paid from the Phoenix City Treasury for the regular municipal election and Board of Education election to be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, well, we're reading the resolution, which we've all heard, council, at this time I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Comments, discussion? Question? Not, I'd call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the engineering department, we have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign a letter, question assistant in regards to the emergency watershed protection program, EWPB. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, desires to purchase a compact tractor for Lakewood Dog Course.
Oh, oh, that's the wrong one, okay. Yeah, did I skip?
No, you're right.
We have an engine in the park. The one with the watershed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll put it to you.
That happens.
Whereas the city received 5.46 inches of rain on April 6, 2025, which caused flooding along the Culture Gully Creek and the surrounding neighborhoods. And whereas the engineering department contacted the Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, to conduct a site visit, access the flood damage, and recommend programs to address the flooding problem. And whereas the emergency watershed protection program, EWPB, is a program available to municipalities following natural disasters that funds projects that reduce the threat to life and property loss by flooding. And whereas to begin the process for applying for these funds, a letter to the Alabama State Conservationists must be sent requesting assistance. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign the letter requesting assistance in regards to the EWPB. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, if that's your first time, I'm sure you won't be, you're late, so council, we've all heard the resolution, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion, councilmember Green, and that's the second?
Yes.
Councilman Day? We have a motion, we have a second, you have it, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion? I guess I may, could be some kind of elaboration, but it's a decision of Phoenix City, actually. Okay.
Yes, sir, this is the date of that April 6, 2025 flooding that we had along Oakmont Street, that watershed there. We met with the NRCS right after it happened, they sort of turned us down, said no, that doesn't apply, or anything like that, we asked people in the office, but we're very persistent, once they, we got a second look at it. So this is a grant through the NRCS, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, that will allow protection of watersheds. Basically, they want the watershed to be protected, and they're trying to do anything else so that no one else can be flooded or anything. So this grant is, this is just application for the grant, this is the very first process, it's not promised that we're going to get it, but this grant would be to go out and purchase or buy out the homes that actually have floodwater in their homes, that's the only thing that it applies to, nothing else, this money cannot be used to clean up the creek, or dredge, or anything like that, it has to be used on buyouts. So this is something that, you know, right now, we're looking at a 25% city match, 75% conservation money, but if we do, we could apply, see if we're in some kind of low-income area, which we think that we probably are in the 90% to 10% match, so that would need to be better. But just want to make sure, you know, this is something that we're trying real hard out there, and we're still pushing every day to do stuff to help that flooding issue down there and crawl apart. Like I said, these grants are specific, you can only use these grants for certain things, so it's not like we're only chasing this one, we're trying to go through any other ones that we can find, but this is one, you know, that we really buckle down on, and that we can get some really good people. But the citizens will have to agree to let us purchase the house, and then the house is not being demolished, it cannot be built on, or the block cannot be built on again.
Well, let me ask you, this was more, if one, if the citizen decides, changes their mind, decides to stay there after that offer, what happens then?
No, I mean, we're still looking for funding money, but I mean, that's the whole point of this, you know, we know that it's going to continue to flood down there.
Yeah, yeah.
We've gone through that time and time again, we know it's going to continue to flood, so if they're really concerned about, about flood, you know, this is the opportunity that they have, you know, to go ahead and take care of that.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Well, this was done over four years ago, houses were purchased, and of course, some of the people that lived there down that one river, and they didn't want, you know, had time to make those offers, so you can't, you know, say that they should have done it last time, you know, waited too long. But how long does the process take for us to find out whether we get it, on an average, and then once we do, that you can start approaching people about asking them about, would they be interested, for example?
We've never done one through NRCS like this, but from what I understand, it can take, you know, six months, but we had to first be, after this grant application, we have to be approved before that, right? And I'm not saying that those monies will be there.
Oh, nothing, you're not, but anyhow, like Mr. Day said, Mr. Hunter said, and y'all would, if they don't talk about this, the people, everybody in the city needs to realize that, you know, the cities, I guess, were forever, well, my way to word it is, is you 're concerned with the people there, is what I'm trying to say, that live in that area, and hate the city that's happening, but it's not anything that anybody has caught in the last 50 years, it's nature problems, but we aren't, hopefully, maybe it'll come to some kind of conclusion that can help the people that live there, but it's not ever going, that problem's not ever going to go away, that it's going to be there, just like that river is right there, and it's going to rise and fall, and it wants to take some of the sand with it, and you have to put it back, it's just, that's part of the problem of being around water that, you know, can flood, but I'm just glad to see that the people of the city realize that everybody sitting up here, everybody out there is concerned, you know, for the people that are involved in this, and that shows that even every part of the city, as Mr. Hunter said yesterday, every part of the city matters, and it's not one part of the city that matters more than another, this is happening to be a particular problem of the people in that particular area, and that everybody is concerned with us, and we treat District 1, 2, as a, everything is a whole city, and I really think that's a statement.
Thank you. Let me, you say something about low income, possibly, maybe, not sure, but it's an opportunity to get the 90%.
Yes, that would be, yes, man, low, high income, but we're trying, that, their idea of low, high income is completely different than a 10%. So when I talked to y'all yesterday about how to find all of these pieces that actually go together for which grant it could be possible, so, you know, that's another one, we just have to figure out their process for what they say is what we need, so that's a process.
Okay.
But 90% would be great.
We appreciate anything, if you want to help us, we would be difficult there.
Thank you, well, let me ask you this, I guess it's a silly question, but what happens, like somebody writing out, say, I want to sell my home, you know, and somebody buys their own, and going, and both did the good, so.
That's not ethical, that's.
Yeah, I know, there's a question.
If they come up to the city offices, we would let them know that it was a flood zone, and that has flooded before, but I can't say that, you know, we're just, you know, discussing or not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other comments, discussion, or questions? Not at this time, I'd call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council on the golf department, we have a resolution in reference to authorize and purchase of one pro bono tractor model MX-6000HST from Becher's Tractor and Equipment in an amount not to exceed $38,400. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, desires to purchase a compact tractor for Lakewood Dog Course. And whereas Becher's Tractor and Equipment provided below its quote for a 60 horsepower tractor with a Canadian turf tires for a total cost of $38,400. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the purchase of one pro bono tractor model MX-6000HST from Becher's Tractor and Equipment in an amount not to exceed $38,400. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, well, we're reading the resolution, council we've all heard the resolution, this time I'd like to ask the council for a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion, councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? Not, not any, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the police department, we do have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, city manager, and chief of police to sign head entry into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Auburn, Alabama, for professional services utilizing both police departments. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, and the city of Auburn, Alabama, desire to enter into a contract with the city of Auburn for professional services utilizing the Phoenix City Police Department. And whereas it would be a benefit to the city of Auburn and the city of Phoenix City to enter into a contract for professional services and have a mutual aid agreement between the Phoenix City Police Department and Auburn Division of Police. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager as authorizing officials, and George Dodger as chief of police are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the above referenced MOU and professional services contract with the city of Auburn. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, council, we've heard the resolution, this time we may, may I ask the council for a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion, councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilmember Green. Comments or discussion?
I guess, Mayor, certainly, yesterday, this is something we do handle, and the chief you operate from the nuisance that here in Phoenix City, Alabama, office over there, they will understand it.
Sure, Mr. Day, this is a longstanding contract that we've had for over 20 years, and we ask the council to approve each year to provide additional support to the Auburn home football games. As you know, they have a large influx on home games, they probably have double population coming to one of those games, so they contract with surrounding home enforcement agencies to provide student support for security and traffic control, so it's been a good, it's good for Auburn, it's good for the police department to provide that assistance for one of our surrounding agencies. I think we've been doing it for years, all their support's would be entered into certain agreements, complete a local office with Auburn's enforcement laws over their pay bases and appropriate. Thank you, sir.
Yes, chief, this is within the state of Alabama, have we ever contracted outside of the state of Alabama for Jason and Alabama?
Okay. Nameless of these state agencies, our local, local, you know, this local and shared departments have contracted, takes a tremendous amount of resources to work on those games, and strictly do that in the state of Auburn.
Good job.
Thank you, chief. Okay, that, and then, council, at this time I'd like to call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council, proceeding on on the utilities department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from A.N. Smith Company Corporation by installing a program of flow meters for the Brandon Line Booster Pump Station in an amount not to exceed $14,196.75. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is intending to flow meters at the Brandon Line Booster Pump Station to have control of pumps for the sky. And whereas the city has received a proposal from A.N. Smith Company, in a total amount of $14,196.75. And whereas said proposal includes equipment installation and programming for flow meters. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept the proposal from A.N. Smith Company, for the Brandon Line Booster Pump Station flow meters in an amount not to exceed $14,196.75. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, council, we've heard the resolution, this time, ma'am, is council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, motion, councilman Day, that's the second, councilman Gordon, we have a list, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second, any comments on discussion, council? If not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also proceeding on, council on the utilities department, there's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to approve payment to Brown and Son LLC to replace pump one in Brandon Line Pump Station in an amount not to exceed $1,602.12. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City Utilities Department operates a water distribution system which supplies water to Phoenix City and Russell County. And whereas the Brandon Line Pump Station currently has two water pumps operating at said pump station, pumps one and two. And whereas the motor of pump one failed, which makes pump one inoperable, and with only pump two operating, the utilities department was unable to provide an adequate amount of water to Phoenix City and Russell County and the areas served by the Brandon Line Pump Station. And whereas the pump motor had to be replaced as soon as possible to be able to provide adequate water supply. And whereas Brown and Son LLC worked through the night to get the motor replaced and had pump one operating before dawn. And whereas Brown and Son LLC submitted an invoice for the above mentioned work in the amount of $11,651.22. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to approve payment to Brown and Son LLC for the replacement of the motor for pump one at Brandon Line Pump Station in an amount not to exceed $11,651.22. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, council, we've all heard the resolution, at this time, I'd ask the council for a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion, councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilman Day. Comments or discussion, council? All right, I think, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
And proceeding on, on the utilities department, council, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to hire eco-temperatures and install new joints on valve stems on sediment basins three and four at the water filtration plant in an amount not to exceed $7,631.55. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City operates a water filtration plant. And whereas Resolution 2025-113 approved the repair and replacement of some valves for sediment basins three and four which are inoperable or not fully functional at a cost of $27,459.14. And whereas during said repairs and or replacement of valves, it was found that some of the valve stems were installed at an angle which caused stress on the operating equipment. And whereas new joints need to be installed on some of the stems to alleviate said stress. And whereas Ekotec submitted a quote for installing said new joints for an additional cost of $7,631.55, which would make the total cost $35,090.69. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to hire Ekotec to perform said new joint installations on valve stems on sediment basins three and four at the water filtration plant in an amount not to exceed $7,631.55. Pass approved and adopted this 15th day of July, 2025.
Okay, thank you again for the reading of that resolution, council, we've all heard the resolution, at this time I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Motion, councilman Day, and second, councilman Gordon. All right, Mrs. Davis? Comments or discussion, council? Not, I'd call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the ordinance, we do have a public hearing, and a public hearing, and a second reading, as an ordinance to index into the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, 0.30 plus minus acres of land located on Overlake Road and Newson Drive, E.E.H., owner, LLC is the owner. First reading, council was on the 30th, on the 3rd of June, I would not ask for a re-read it, however, I will just ask for a motion, but before that, I am declaring this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone who would like to come forward and address the council in reference to this anticipation, now's the time to do something. now it's time to do so. Since no one has stepped forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed. And at this time, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the anticipation of this part.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Council, Gordon may have a second.
Second.
Second, Council, Miss Bailey. Ms. Davis.
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council, on the license applications. This is the first reading. We have an application of an off-premise beer license submitted by Alaman LLC doing business as Rainbow Food located at four eighteen Marlowe King Jr. Parkway South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have three letters. First letter coming from the Phoenix City Police Department Assistant Chief of Police, Jolie White. Reference Alaman LLC doing business as Rainbow Food. Alajandro Valero, four eighteen Martin Luther King Jr. Highway, I'm sorry, Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway South, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. I have reviewed the application for an off-premise beer license and have no objection to issuing this license to this applicant based on his criminal background investigation. Second letter coming from Fire Chief Kristen H. Kennedy. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Alajandro Leon Valero Jr. of Alaman LLC doing business as Rainbow Food located at four eighteen Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway South, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. The applicant has applied for an off-premise beer license. An inspection has been conducted and this facility meets the fire code requirements for this type occupancy. Third letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the applications submitted by Alajandro Leon Valero Jr. of Alaman LLC doing business as Rainbow Food located at four eighteen Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway for an off-premise beer license. This facility has been inspected and meets the minimum building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses. And that concludes all three letters.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading. It's time for a like, ask for a motion placed on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Council, Miss Bailey. Motion from Council, Danny, and we have a second from Council, Miss Bailey. Okay, Ms. Davis.
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council. We have an application of an off-premise beer license, off-premise wine license and off-premise whiskey wine license submitted by Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe LLC doing business as Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe LLC located at seventy-eleven thirteenth street, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have three letters. First letter coming from Phoenix City Police Department, Chief of Police George H. Stoddinger. Reference Alice Sales, Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe LLC doing business as Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe, seventy-eleven thirteenth street, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. I have reviewed the applications for off-premise beer, off-premise wine and off-premise whiskey wine licenses. And I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon her criminal background investigation. Second letter coming from Fire Chief Kristen H. Kennedy. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Alice Sales of Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe LLC doing business as Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe located at seventy-eleven thirteenth street, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. The applicant has applied for off-premise beer, off-premise wine and whiskey wine licenses. An inspection has been conducted and this facility meets the fire code requirements for this type occupancy. Third letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Alice Sales of Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe LLC doing business as Kalani's Hawaiian Style Cafe located at seventy-eleven thirteenth street for off-premise beer, off-premise wine and off-premise whiskey wine licenses. This facility has been inspected and meets the minimum building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses. And that concludes all three letters.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Council, we've heard the reading, first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion placed on first reading, please.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, that's a motion. Councilmember Green may have a second.
Second.
Second, Council, Miss Gordon. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Council, under first reading, we have an application of excuse me, of an off-premise beer license submitted by Proper Market Inc. Doing business as the shortstop located on five thousand five Summerville Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have three letters. First letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Devon Drakeumar, Project Patty of Proper Market Inc. Doing business as the shortstop located at five thousand five Summerville Road for an off-premise beer license. We had issues with Mr. Project Patty at this location earlier this year. I recommend denial of this license due to his history with this department. Second letter coming from Phoenix City Police Department, Chief of Police George Stoddinger. Reference Devon Drakeumar, Project Patty, Proper Market Inc. Doing business as the shortstop, five thousand five Summerville Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. After review of the application submitted by Devon Drakeumar, Project Patty for an off-premise beer license, it is my recommendation that this application be denied. The reason for denial is information obtained during the background check. Third letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Devon Drakeumar, Project Patty of Proper Market Inc. Doing business as the shortstop located at five thousand five Summerville Road for an off-premise beer license. We had issues with Mr. Project Patty at this location earlier this year. I recommend denial of this license due to his history with this department. That concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading. Before we, two letters to say.
You're giving everyone from the five park?
Before we put it on first reading, we need to. Two letters from both Ray Rogers. And they want from the Chief of Police and they're not going from.
Five park.
So we're okay with what we have here to go to the board, please, sir?
Yeah, my boss would just check.
I don't know why, but I'll let her in there, but, um, he finally did comply with the fire code requirement.
That's what I was gonna say, all you could do was check the building.
Yeah, we did inspection, we did have issues like, like the little apartment there and, um, not complying with the, um, inspections, but he finally got the things that we needed from him, it's correct, man. So, and I don't do any of the background checks, so.
Right. I just want to make sure from a legality standpoint, before we place on first reading, we're good with what we have, I guess. Tim, my question. Tim? Are we good? We don't have the, uh, five park on the first reading. Uh, you have to ask us. Are we okay to believe in this animal?
She just gave you one.
She gave a verbal. Ray?
I got an email where it said she wants to read it.
I'm not fine with it. I don't think she gave a verbal.
I got an email that she wants to read, I'm gonna give this to Ray. It, it, it was just a letter.
Yeah, let her read it. Yeah, hopefully you can finish right back, or Chief.
All right. Letter coming from Fire Chief Kristen H. Kennedy. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Devon Drakeumar, Project Patty of Proper Market Inc. Doing business as the shortstop located at five thousand five Summerville Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. This applicant has applied for an off-premise beer license. An inspection has been conducted and this facility meets the fire code requirements for this type occupancy. And that concludes all three letters.
Thank you, thank you, uh.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Council, Gordon. Catching that, we all missed it. Thank you, Gordon, for looking out. Okay, uh, Council, we've all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion from Council, Gordon may have a second.
Right.
Second, Council, Miss Bailey. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Proceeding on, Council, on the City Manager. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to sign the memorandum of understanding allowing legal council of government to apply for the FOIA SPP grant on behalf of the city for the purpose of updating the Kachakalich Creek Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the city completed the Kachakalich Creek Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan in 2011 to evaluate existing conditions and outline needed improvements to alleviate the flooding condition. And whereas the Delta Regional Authority has a strategic planning program, SPP, grant that provides funding for municipalities to plan for the needs of their communities. And whereas legal council of governments has agreed to apply for the SPP grant on behalf of the city for the purpose of updating the Kachakalich Creek Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the Mayor and City Manager to sign the memorandum of understanding allowing legal council of governments to apply for the SPP grant on behalf of the city. Pass approved and adopted this fifteenth day of July, 2025.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Davis, Council. We've heard the resolution and it's time for a like, ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilman Danny may have a second.
Second.
Second, Council, Gordon. Comments, questions, or discussions? Okay. Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir. This is another grant that's also dealing with Kukwits Creek Watership. Just the other area that we talked about, the other resolution that we talked about. But this is a strategic planning program grant from the Delta Regional Authority. So they will give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a planning, a planning. So what we thought we would do with government, legal council of governments is our plan was done in 2011, the original Kukwits Creek Watership Plan. So, you know, it's been fourteen years, it's time to update that, you know, so. So we can find out if there are any other improvements that can be done. But what will happen, this will allow us to say, okay, we're updating our plan, there's the things that we planned on, yeah, we can go get some other construction money. This right here is just for the plan, but it will help us in the long run and show that we are, you know, in the process of making, you know, efforts to get this property corrected, no matter which, you know, that we still know it's gonna flood, but still we're making efforts and going forward with it. So this is another one of those, you know, this manager's pushed us real hard, you know, we are the whole of the city, you know, in this, to get a little propart, we had a few, uh, subdivision in Kukwits Creek, so this is another effort that we have. We're gonna go in, update the plan and hopefully we'll be able to secure some construction money or something like that after the plan is done.
Who does the plan? I mean, how do you come up with a plan that's different from what you had eleven years ago? I mean, how do you come up with a new idea for the plan?
Well, I mean, and that's what it is. There may, there probably not gonna be a new idea, because we all know it's still gonna flood. You know, that's been done. But can they come up with some type of different measures or something? So that everybody has an advance is.
Maybe new engineering advances and stuff that you didn't have back then, now, that you could figure.
Is this, does this also give plans maybe prepared to do dredging and stuff more often? Or is that, like, maybe something like that?
Yes, this would look at something like that.
You could be part of that, too, to regular, you know, of doing something.
Yes, sir.
Over two years, over four years, going in, re-sloping or whatever you have to do, you can mix it up, like, yeah.
Another question, comment? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moore. And now, Council, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote, Ms. Davis.
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Proceeding on, Council, on the City Manager.
We have a resolution and public notice in reference to the public hearing of the proposed 2025, twenty twenty-six history of proposed budget. Ms. Davis.
Whereas section five point zero five of the City Charter of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, provides that the City Council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. And whereas the proposed budget has been submitted to the City Council. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the public hearing shall be held on Thursday, July thirty-first, 2025, at seven o'clock P M Eastern Time on the 2025, 2026 proposed budget. And that public notice shall be given in the Citizen News of Citizens of East Alabama at least seven days prior to say a public hearing. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the public notice attached here too is approved and shall be advertised as provided here and above by the City Port of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Pass approved and adopted this fifteenth day of July, 2025. And the public notice reads as follows. The City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July thirty-first, 2025, at seven o'clock P M Eastern Time in the council chambers of the Public Safety Building located at eleven eleven Broad Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, on the 2025, 2026 proposed budget. A copy of the 2025, 2026 proposed budget is on file in the Office of the City Port, six zero one twelve street, Phoenix City, Alabama. This proposed budget is available for public inspection between the hours of eight A M and five P M, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Council, we've all heard the resolution as well as the reading of the public notice. At this time, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
I would have a motion to approve the resolution and public notice. Ms. Council, Miss Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Council, Miss Gordon. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Councilmember Danny?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor, uh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, so much. We appreciate it. Thank you all so very much, uh, Council. Ms. Davis, thank you all. Thank all of the public here and everyone, welcome to Phoenix City, again, uh, Pastor Wollman, Mrs. Wollman, we appreciate you all being here. Uh, thanks, Council, anything anyone like to add or take away? Before I get to the City Manager? If not, uh, it's not. Thank you all so much. Again, we appreciate it. I do just want to say this and as a reminder, um, and I want us, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of this council.[1720.24] We all know that horrific events that happened down in Texas. I want us, here in Phoenix City, and I'm asking, and I can only ask that that's the easiest thing to hear, very easily. We need to keep those people and that community in prayer. But what I want us to do, and I, again, I, I, I know confidently, I can speak on behalf of this entire coun- council, is that you know, we need to realize how blessed we are and continue to be as united as we can and be there for each other, because things can happen so quickly that can force us to come together. And it's always easier, in my opinion, to come together without having to be forced. And so my pledge and plea to the, this community is that we continue to think of others and think of others in this community. Because we, uh, we're grateful, we're thankful for this community, and, uh, there's nothing that would bring us more when I say us, this council, myself, and all the department head, city manager, that this community continue to unite. And as it was said yesterday, uh, my messenger, Mr. Hunter, was saying, uh, by Councilwoman Bailey today. We support and inspire and equate, equal to every issue. So let's be thankful and thank God that He's blessed us and that He may continue to bless this community. And we thank you all, we love you all, and we just, that's our prayer, we be united. Thanks, everyone. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
All right, I noticed on the fourth of July fireworks, I had to, to take my friend boys, and they were so excited, and I and I was excited seeing that, and I enjoyed that show that I would pass off to the father, where she would tell you, we enjoyed that, I just wanted you to know that, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you again, let's, let's, uh, let's pursue to be united and to love and lift up each other in this community. Thank you all so much, we thank CTV Bean for bringing this, and may God continue to bless us, as I always say, individually, but more importantly collectively. Thank you all, and we do stand.